Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, September 29, 2025. I am Select Board Chair Diane Mahan, and to my right, or maybe your left, is?
John Hurd.
Leonard Diggins.
Steve De Corsi.
James Feeney, Town Manager.
Michael Cunningham, Town Council.
Ashley Mark, Board Administrator.
And Mr. Helmoth was endeavoring to join us by Zoom, but that may not happen. If it does, we'll be told by either the Vice Chair or Board Administrator. What I'd like to do is, as I stated at the last meeting, the month of September, I've chosen to read the land acknowledgement as passed by town meeting several years ago. So I want to do that again at our second meeting here in September, which states as follow, "We acknowledge that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today." Thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item 2, and I will take a motion to postpone. The Superintendent unfortunately had a last-minute scheduling conflict, so I'll take a motion to postpone by?
So moved.
Mr. Hurd, seconded by?
Ryan Diggins.
Mr. Diggins, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Now go to Consent Agenda. Minutes of meetings, August 18, 2025; September 3, 2025; September 15, 2025; Acceptance of Funds for the 2025 Annual Arlington Town Day; Request Permit for Veterans' Day Parade, Tuesday, November 11, from our Director of Veteran Services, Philip McGovern; Reappointments to the Historic Districts Commission, both terms to expire June 30, 2028, David Baldwin and Brian LeBeau. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. De Corsi, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Hurd, any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm the first being reappointed.
Oh, please do, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you for joining us, we're very lucky to have you.
My name is David Baldwin. I've been on the, this is my fourth reappointment to the commission. For those of you who don't know me, I was the past President of the Historical Society, the Schwarmill, I was the first Director of the Historical Society. I also, I work at the Mitre Corporation, I've been there for 40 years as the corporate My interest and goals has been, so this is the opportunity for you not to reappoint I'm a historic preservationist, I've been mentored by John Warden and Patricia Fitzmaurice for the past 45 years, and Mrs. Fitzmaurice is no longer with us, and Mr. Warden is getting on, and I plan to continue their struggle into the future, which historic preservation in Arlington is always a struggle. I will champion the preservation of Arlington's civic, commercial, and residential buildings, which I think need champions. I will work to preserve and enhance the streetscapes in historic districts. I will also work to urge town officials to address the challenges of investing in the required long-term maintenance of the town's historic civic buildings, which is something, we do wonderful renovations, but we don't use, we don't put the $20,000, $50,000 aside every year to fix the windows in the Town Hall or the senior center. And I will also continue to engage with the Town Manager on issues of historic preservation. Anyway, that's my, I'll get off the soapbox and give you the opportunity to not reappoint me.
While he's here, what are you going to do about that?
Again, it's a maintenance issue. It's actually leaking from the outside, so it's the same with the cupola. If we had spent the money to keep that up, we were given this wonderful, I don't want to derail the meeting.
I ask for it.
The windows, it's a simple thing of window maintenance on the exterior that needs to be done. The community center where I go too frequently now that I'm over 70, the window sills, they just need a little preservation work. It's short money to avoid a bigger catastrophe, and, you know, somehow we need to come up with the money to do these things. Anyway, I'll stop at that.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Certainly appreciate your dedication, and coming down, which on appointments, we do make it a requirement for people to come down on reappointments because we know we've taken so much of your time. It's not a requirement, but I do appreciate you coming down and reminding of us of who your face is, as well as what it is you're dealing with on the commission, as well as what your stated goals moving forward.
The commission, by the way, is the worst committee to be appointed to, or the worst commission in town. Maybe other commissions and other boards, but it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of sort of thankless work.
Well, thank you, Mr. De Corsi.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for your enthusiasm for addressing us tonight. I made the initial motion, and after your presentation, I will renew my motion for approval of the consent agenda.
And Mr. Hurd, will you second it still? Thank you. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much.
Right. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, have a good. We now go to Licenses and Permits for Approval of Common Victular License, Venice Italian Kitchen, 242 Mass Ave, Mina Sherubin, and Marwan Alia. Do you want to come to the table and say your names correctly? I apologize if I didn't.
No, you did it, good. Good afternoon, my name is Mina Sherubin.
My name is Marwan Alia.
And do you want to just give a brief description of your request for your Common Victular License at Venice Italian Kitchen? Is it going to stay the same?
Yeah, we are both, we've been in business before. I start as a business owner when I was 25 years old, after three years in the United States. My first business was in Framingham, it was a successful business, then I bought another one in Waltham, and I took a little break after the COVID, and now I'm hoping to do a good job in Arlington also. And Marwan, he was my neighbor in Waltham, he used to have a restaurant in Waltham, that's how we met.
We were a block from each other.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then I, same thing, I took a break after COVID, and then we're back, back at it.
That's very exciting. I know how difficult the restaurant business can be.
It is a tough one, yeah, for sure.
Takes a lot of your time, a lot of your family's time, and a lot of people who work for you become your family.
Absolutely. That's right, that's right.
My family is the chateaus.
Oh, really? It was in Waltham, yeah, that was like, yeah.
They're everywhere. But no, I don't eat there because they won't let me pay, but, but thank you. Is there a motion first?
Move approval.
By Mr. Hurd, seconded by?
Ryan Diggins.
Mr. Diggins? Any questions or comments? No? And again, thank you so much for?
Thank you.
Coming here to Arlington, wish you nothing but success, and hope to see you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
An emotion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Now go to Citizens Open Forum. You two, have a good night. If you're here in the chambers, you can actually raise your hand, or if you're at home and joining us by Zoom, please use the Raise Hand feature in Zoom, which is at the bottom of your screen in the very bottom toolbar. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration, the board shall neither be acted upon, nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. I see one hand here in the chambers. If you could come up to the table, name an address for the record.
Good evening, I'm David Staff from Fairmont Street in Arlington, and I'm here to express my appreciation for the board and their effort to comment on the Health Peak ENF. It's a complex document, and you all went from zero to 60 in record time. And those of us who are living along the Al-Wife in Arlington, I personally really appreciate your efforts, because I think that the town's involvement in Cambridge's planning process will pay big dividends for those of us who reside along the Al-Wife. And so, that said, if I made any tweak to the letter that I've seen in the meeting materials, it would be to address the traffic concerns, and that stems principally from my belief that the Al-Wife Brook Parkway, which is listed in the National Registry of Historic Places, should be a recreational resource for the whole community, but particularly the Al-Wife portion of the town. And allowing that to degrade, allowing that to become a highway deprives our community of an asset which we really, it is ours, and we should see that it is cared for, but beyond that, it's an ENF, that will be addressed. Traffic will be extensively addressed in the Environmental Impact Report, and, you know, I hope that the town takes a look at what is said and continues being involved in the process, both for this project and the ones that follow it, because we have a lot to gain from it. So thank you for what you have done.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Staff. Anyone else in the chambers? Anyone on Zoom? Seen no further hands? We'll now go to Traffic Rules and Orders. Agenda Item 8, Discussion and Vote. We have our environmental planner, David Morgan, Invasive Management on Select Board-Owned Properties. If you could come up and say your name again and position, just for, when people could tie it to the face.
Good evening, David Morgan, Environmental Planner, presenting on the topic of invasive management on select board-owned properties. Last year, slightly more than a year ago at this time, we were before you asking permission to conduct invasive management on one property that the Select Board owns, and there was a broader request then to consider the other properties, but it wasn't clear which properties were in the board's holdings. So I've presented from the assessor's database what are currently held, properties currently held by the board, the number 96, many of them are smaller than an acre, I'd say 89 or so are smaller than an acre. The larger ones in question are recreational, conservation, school-affiliated, or historic properties. McLennan Park is among them, Mount Gilboa is listed as having the Select Board as its owner, Jefferson Cutter House, 25 Irving Building, where recreation is now housed. Those are some of the larger properties on the list. And there's a larger question here about Select Board ownership and agreements with other departments, and whether those come into question with the board's authorization. I think I leave that to you, whether there are agreements, such as at Mount Gilboa, the Conservation Commission has management authority there, and McLennan, where the Recreation Department, Park and Rec, have management authority, et cetera. So, that said, many of these smaller properties are tax possessions, they're little remnant properties that probably the town wasn't sure what to do with when they assumed ownership. They are now on the roster as belonging to the Select Board, and really, none of the smaller ones are subject of any discussion around invasive management. We haven't taken a look at those parcels to see what's growing there, if it's worthy of any attention by our volunteers, et cetera. But being able to clear away a bit of the red tape of getting the authorization to perform this work would be important. It's an uphill battle for volunteers to achieve the necessary permissions from various town departments and so forth in order to conduct this kind of activity, which, you know, we've recognized in our master plan and other documents as significant contribution to Arlington's well-being. So I think that's everything I have to say on the topic, and happy to answer questions.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm very supportive of this, just, with the addresses, I mean, I'm just curious how you read those, I mean, so it's like, for the first one, 109-2-14, I imagine 109 is 109 Summer Street, the dash 2-14, I mean, I can't let this go. I know it's not important, but.
It's the short ID, the parcel ID.
Okay.
In our GIS, which is confusing, I admit. The, the first number, I do believe, is the street address, and where I've looked it up in our databases, it does align. So I haven't checked all 96 to confirm that that's the case, but I do think that is true.
Well, no, I'm very supportive, I mean, it'll be interesting to see, I mean, what comes out of the assessment, I mean, of whatever number you do, you know, and then what the volunteers take on, you know, so it's great to see people wanting to do this, you know, so go for it. Not a motion yet, should I make, go ahead, make the, I'd like to make the motion to approve the request.
Approve the authorization.
Approve the authorization, thank you for the wording, you know.
For DCPD, okay, I won't go ahead, Mr. Hurd?
I'll second the motion, happy to see this. I was just glad when I saw the Agenda Item, you weren't going to assign us days of the week for us to each go out and manage the properties, so if we have volunteers willing to do it, we'll certainly take them up on their, on their expertise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also happy to support this, and just one question, I appreciate the list, because this actually is very helpful for another purpose, we talked about it, our goals, which is potential disposition of some of these parcels, so I appreciate for this purpose having that before us. But on the list, are there any properties that you're aware of that the town is leasing? I certainly support volunteers and appreciate the willingness to do it, just concerned if there's any that are subject to a lease, if there could be a conflict with just timing or with a potential tenant.
That is an interesting question. I am not aware of any of these. I would have thought that Mount Gilboa would be the most likely, but we haven't rented that in some time, and none of the others are popping out at me. I mean, they are quite small, so most don't have buildings or any sort of, you know, other use or function associated with them. I can look into it further, see if we hold any leases on these properties, but, you know, prior to conducting any work, I think there would be conversation with the tenant, there's usually conversations with neighbors and other abutters before any activities undertaken anyhow, so, yeah, neighborly relations is really important for keeping this work moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I would just say, of the 96 possible lots, 50 have already identified that are public lands, I guess owned directly by the town. The remaining 46 are the ones that I think Mr. De Corsi and the board also was referencing, and one of the things, if it's okay, if, I don't know if this needs to be added to the motion, but if there could be a process established for the 96 lots coordinating with the Board Administrator, that once we grant this permission, it cuts, as you said, some of the red tape of having to come back at least 50, if not 96 times, is all allowed the Planning, Community, and Development Department to sort of skip that step. But I'd like to see some sort of process established where, when DPCD does have a group of volunteers and goes out to a lot or lots, that, that's communicated to the Board Administrator.
Okay.
And/or a work with Mr. Feeney, somehow so the board can get also notified of it, just so if someone calls up and says, well, you know, I see a bunch of people on Lancaster Street, what the heck is going on there? We will have already received the information to say, oh, well, that's something, it's a volunteer program, they're going out and probably removing invasives, et cetera, and so on. So I'll leave that to you, Mr. Morgan and Mr. Feeney, to work out with the board's office, just so, not saying it has to be an agenda item, because that's the whole purpose of the vote, to cut that out, but just so we can have that information. And it'll save you all emails, or me, or others calling the Town Manager, saying, what's going on at 109 Summer Street? So if there are no further questions or comments on a motion by Mr. Diggins, oh, Mr. Feeney, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I guess I just would say, because I noticed it, that there is at least one property on there listed as a tax possession that has since been redeemed, and it is back under private property ownership, and that would be 62 to 64 Brooks Ave, so that should not be on the list.
So as those things arise, the manager's office will sort of oversee that, adjust the list of 96 lots, so we're down to 95. Okay. If my?
Well, it's just 95. I did my part.
An emotion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. I don't know if you want to get up and walk around the chair. We now go to Agenda Item 9, again from our environmental planner, Mr. Morgan, Discussion and Vote, Authorization to Use Town-Hold Property for Garden 250 Project.
Again, David Morgan, Environmental Planner. I have been at work on this Garden 250 project since our department undertook the planning of the larger 250th celebration, and this is a longer-term idea, sort of a lasting memorial to the town's history and the vegetation that grew in this area at the time of settlement, and also thinking about those changes in the climate that will result in changes to that plant palette, and how we might think proactively about preserving, you know, the vegetation and other sort of amenities that that affords us. This effort is undertaken with our Economic Development Coordinator as a partner, Katie Lucie. She and I have gone through the process of design development, at least to the concept stage, with Ray Dunnett's Landscape Architecture, so we now have a plan for the Garden 250, which runs from Mill Street to Water Street, I believe, or Mystic, yeah, Mystic. And will be planted on either sides of the Minuteman Bike Way with other amenities, passive recreation, things of that nature. The idea and the reason that I'm before you today is that we might expand what's a relatively thin, linear site to the corner of the Select Board-owned parking lot, adding an additional 4,500 feet or so of planting area, and that would boost the project and its visibility fairly considerably. That area is elevated, and so not at the same grade as the parking, there are some utility boxes nearby, a handful of trees, one I noticed today is not faring very well, and may need to be replanted. All of that would be retained, we would simply add plantings to the area, and obviously, we're planning management activities around this, similar to the last conversation around our invasive management volunteers, thinking ahead about how we keep this area a beautiful, ecologically responsible attraction in Arlington Center. And with that, I suppose I turn it over to you, a conversation about that little corner of the parking lot.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Move approval. Clearly needs a little bit of an update, because I've driven by there 100 times, I didn't even know that there was a little parcel, I thought that the parking spaces went right up to the, to the path there, so anything we can do to beautify it and bring the parcel out, I think would be perfect.
Mr. Diggins?
Happy to second this, I mean, I like, I like that it came out of working on, I mean, that, I mean, original, I mean, strip from Mystic to Mill, I mean, and so encouraged me that kind of thinking, I mean, and so, so, yeah, no, so I look forward to seeing what you do there, you know, and if Katie is involved, and I'll just say Katie, since she's not here, you know, I know it'll be beautiful, yeah, so, so, great, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, the One-Day Alcohol License Application and Policy. To no fault of his own, Mr. Helmoth, who had hoped to join us, cannot, and I think it's really imperative that we have a full board discussion and/or, if there is any vote, a full board vote, so after speaking with Town Council, we could take a motion to postpone by?
So moved.
Mr. De Corsi, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hurd. Any questions? And I'll endeavor, my plan would be for the October 6 meeting, it's in there as a placeholder, but it definitely will be in October, because we, I really want to get that done. We all do, and same with Mr. Helmoth, it's circumstances beyond his control. An emotion by Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Did I jump over Health Peak?
Yeah.
I did.
I know that was intentional, so.
No, just, I went the way I wrote the things, and we'll go back to Agenda Item 10, Discussion and Vote. Vote, Health Peak, the quadrangle, Cambridge Point, Al-Wife Development, MEPA Environmental Notification Form comments. As was stated before by Mr. Staff and others, and Kristen Anderson, and Save the Al-Wife, Jean Benson, who's on our Redevelopment Board, David White on the Conservation Commission, but even more importantly, so many people have met behind the scenes through email, in person, et cetera. Our Health and Human Services Director, Colleen Legere, if I say her name correctly or incorrectly, as well as our Public Health Director, Kylie Foley, besides contributing to this, also had a Board of Health meeting to gather information. Our Public, DPW Director, Mike Radamaka, besides contributing, as he always does, he's also our representative on the MWRA Advisory Board, and as recently as the last meeting, has been very passionate about advocating for the Al-Wife and all things related to the live bacteria that gets dumped in there. You can ask him about his conversation with his counterpart in some of them, as well as, I know there's been a great amount of time and resources and expertise, much needed and much appreciated by the Town Council's Office, Attorney Cunningham, and Attorney Munson, as well as Peter Buckley. And we all know the workhorse, Mr. Feeney, has not only done an extraordinary amount of input into this letter, but it's really, at least for me, helped me focus on, since this is the first letter of the up to four developments, 4.5 billion, that's a true billion cost projection there, unlike the CSO meeting they had the other night, which is a different thing. So there's been a lot of work that's gone into this letter, and we chose to largely focus on the public health aspect moving forward, as well as highlighting the environmental justice communities along the Al-Wife Brook, that Arlington from Lafayette Boulevard, Herbert, Sunnyside, Gardner, et cetera, that legitimately do experience overflow waters with live bacteria, which is a serious public health concern. At one of the meetings, somebody had said, you know, if my toilet wasn't working and I was dumping out everything that my family put in and out the window, the town would be down in a heartbeat, and I couldn't say I don't have enough money to fix it, and they would be told, you can't do that anymore, and you have to fix it, so. So that's where we got to the letter, and I also want to thank my colleagues, I know I've been touching base in various forums on this letter, on Health Peak as it evolves around, most recently, Mr. De Corsi, using his attorney hat, and Mr. Hurd, and Mr. Diggins, so. And I know my colleagues have had conversations and comments that have been incorporated into the draft letter, so with that, as sort of a preface, if there's a motion, or if there's any points that anyone wants to discuss first? there's any points that anyone wants to discuss first before the motion. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you. So I appreciate the changes. And as with the original letter, the winning paragraph, for me, is the last paragraph. I think it really encapsulates our understanding for the need in the community and the request to just make it as good as it can possibly be. And I do like how attorney, our attorneys have not so much footnoted, but at least annotated certain elements. And on the top of the second page, at the end of that paragraph, there's a line, "As the data continues to come in for CSO discharges in 2024, 25, it's evident that the problem is increasing." I tried to find that evidence, and I couldn't. So I would just ask if it's all possible to indicate where that's coming from. That would be great. It's not a showstopper by any stretch. If you can't do it, don't worry about it for this letter, but just for my edification. I'd like to at least see where that preliminary data is. So that's it.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I do want to note it is by design at the bottom of Page 2 and top of Page 3 to highlight, reinforce the comments, statements made by Health Peak in the ENF regarding the addressing the wastewater. Mr. De Corsi made a suggestion and crafted the language and related references to the sections, and I think that was a great addition, because it sort of gives a guideline for everyone in terms of what they've stated in the ENF and what we expect at a minimum. So, Mr. Hurd?
Did you make a motion?
Well, I didn't make a motion, but I did want to say one more.
Did you make a motion?
No, I did not. But you can make the motion then.
No, I just want to thank everyone that put all the time into this and expertise. You know, I always say, we have, I'm happy to have individuals on the board and town staff that have a lot more expertise in the CSO issue than me, but, you know, I certainly support everything that's put in here. So I move to authorize the chair to sign this letter on behalf of the full select board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. De Corsi?
Can I say?
Mr. Diggins?
Sorry. So one more, I just want to express appreciation to Eugene Benson, who I asked me several questions, and I really appreciated his kind of straightforward and even keel responses. And I reached out to Jim Wilcox, I mean, the engineer in Cambridge, who got back to me, you know, within hours and was very straightforward, with a lot of questions I had, because I really wanted to understand at what point the separated sewer lines from Cambridge, meaning that area connected to the MWRA system. And he was just straightforward. So it's just good to have people who are responsive and who have a level of trust that makes it easier to know what to do. Thank you.
Mr. Feeny, have we missed anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. And we now go to Agenda Item 12, discussion policy regarding the reappointment of members of commissions and committees, and this is something I'll turn to my vice chair, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this was on the goals for last year. And actually, I worked with the town manager and the town moderator, and had pulled it together, you know, by early March. But various things come up at that time of year. And so it's just been kind of, it's just been an animation until now. So I just wanted to make that clear, because it wasn't like this was something that was inspired or instigated me by the letter that we received at the last meeting. This had been on our agenda for a while. And also want to make it clear that this only applies to appointees, the select board, the town manager, and the town moderator. There are other bodies that appoint people to committees, like the school committee, and I can't think of others now. But it does not apply to them. They are certainly welcome to follow our example, and maybe even improve on it, or go, "That's not for us." I think the only way we could mandate that other groups do this, other appointing authorities do this, would be through town meeting. Certainly, I think we recall, a number of years back, there was an article that tried to impose term limits on committee members. But that's not what this is. It's not imposition of term limits. It's really a chance for us to be, kind of pause after a second automatic reappointment, to just assess things. If nothing else, express our appreciation for two terms of service. So I have talked with the town manager since this was posted, and the town manager's made it, helped me understand the operational limitations in the near term. So essentially, we will do this as soon as we can, assuming that you all approve. But it wouldn't be something that would be implemented, like in the next month or two. And if the town manager wants to speak to that, he's welcome to, but not necessary.
Mr. Feeny?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Diggins. I think you hit upon an important point, that it's worth acknowledging that the reappointment process is currently largely automatic. And I know that at times, that has had the effect of, or has been perceived as having the effect of limiting the number of different voices that get to be in decision-making roles on boards, committees, and commissions. But at the same time, we also rely heavily on different members' ongoing willingness to continue to serve on committees. So I think that what Mr. Diggins has drafted strikes that balance of making the process perhaps less automatic, but still respects the fact that, you know, many people who choose to serve for a long period of time, we benefit from that institutional knowledge, and their service may continue to benefit the town. So it puts appointing authorities in a position to be able to assess that service, see if there's any other interest, and then make the best decision at that time, based on the information that's available, whether to sort of move in another direction, or to continue to reappoint that same individual to serve. Now, switching gears to implementation, I will note, what I shared with Mr. Diggins, is that the capital budget for fiscal year '26 did include funding to implement a module for our website that will assist with board and commission management. So if so inclined, the board, if they were to provide this policy direction, as informed by the discussion this evening, would allow us to build out the platform when we begin to do so in the new year, to sort of automate some of these processes in terms of sending that, you know, six months prior to the expiration of someone's term, to see if they're still interested, and have them submit a statement of interest. But what that platform would allow us to do, instead of relying on, you know, by chance, someone who's interested to see a vacancy on a committee at the exact right time when it opens, what we hope the module will allow us to do is to provide better descriptions of the boards, committees, and commissions that we do have on our website, and to allow and sort of, you know, incorporate into each of those committees. People can just submit statements of interest on a rolling basis, so that when a vacancy does occur, we have the opportunity not only to make a public notice of that vacancy, but also to look at the statements of interest that we've received over time of someone who's expressed interest in serving on a particular board, committee, or commission, to do outreach to them, to see if they continue to have a willingness to serve and want to perhaps undertake an interview at that time. So with that, you know, I think one other practical benefit of something like this would be, you know, many of our people, if they're serving a term, a lot of times, they're stepping down perhaps prior to the expiration of their term. And then our process to fill vacancies can be kind of lengthy in terms of posting notices, waiting a certain period of time, collecting statements of interest and resume, reviewing them, conducting interviews, you know, having to come back, you know, before the board. So if we were able to move more quickly on that process, because we already have sort of a repository of resumes and interested folks, we may be able to limit the impact that vacancy has on that given committee, given that it burdens the other members who may shoulder a larger burden, or who may struggle to make quorum as well, if we're not able to fill vacancies in a timely manner. So all that to say, I think that this certainly, you know, the proposed policy presents a certain degree of promise. You know, I think the concerns with implementation were such that we could automate this and build this for a new system we're starting. But in the short or intermediate term, to rethink exactly how we're doing business, as the town clerk noted, may present some hurdles or challenges that by the time we overcome them, we would probably be finding ourselves in a position to build something else and relearn and retrain all the various individuals involved with the appointment processes across the appointing authorities. So all that to say, you know, I appreciate Mr. Diggins actually taking the time to put pen to paper and bring something to the board for consideration, as this has been on our joint goals document now for two consecutive cycles.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Feels like the dish of the parking pilot policy, where we all sat there on our ideas. I mean, I think it's good to have some sort of set policy to deal with it that doesn't just allow auto renewals. I mean, you know, I kind of like digest it and think on it. I think, I don't know, for me, that, you know, between the first and the second term becomes like an auto. I would, if I already designed a policy and, you know, kind of throw this out for the board, and this could be overly onerous on the town and make it, you know, if it overburns staff, then throw it out. But, you know, I think as people, you know, A, I don't know if there's a way to reset appointments, so, you know, they can kind of expire in bulk, where, you know, we kind of have like, all right, this is reappointment month or whatnot, so they all kind of come up sort of at the same time. But it would, in my mind, if there was a way every time anyone's reappointment came up, if it were to post it somewhere, and if somebody applies for it, then we go through, we look at the candidates. If nobody applies, then we just drop them on the consent agenda. Because I think if somebody is already serving and no one else expresses interest in that spot, then there's no need to go through, you know, put it on a normal agenda item and have them come back and relitigate their case. But in any, you know, if it's one term, you know, we have amazing volunteers. We have to preface this. This is a hypothetical, you know, volunteer on a board that, on their first, you know, go around, might be causing problems, or, you know, might be hard to work with, or for whatever reason, you know, someone thinks that they could do a better job on that board or commission. You know, I would like to have an opportunity, if somebody else wants to serve in lieu of that person, even if it is they're coming out of their first term, you know, give someone an opportunity to throw their name in the hat. So I guess, you know, if there was some mechanism to post each one, and I know we have tons of people that serve on boards and commissions, so this could be, again, an administrative nightmare. But, you know, you come up with timeframes and say, you know, 60 days before any expiration, we post it for a week or two weeks. Nobody expresses interest, that person gets put on the consent agenda and gets reappointed in our normal course. If someone does, then we spend a couple weeks, we talk to both interested parties, and we make a decision. And I guess that's, to me, it makes it so, if there's someone that, you know, for whatever reason, again, someone thinks that they could do better for the town on, it allows a mechanism for someone else to throw their name in the ring, their hat in the ring. So that's my thoughts of the beginnings of a policy.
Mr. De Corsi? Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Mr. Diggins for putting this before us, because clearly, we've had an issue the past few years where there's been, we haven't had a uniform application when someone has come up for reappointment. I can think of a couple where we did open it up, and others we didn't. So I like the idea of having, you know, whether it's a policy or a guideline. But I do have some concerns after reading this for the first time, similar to what Mr. Hurd said, that it's almost like we're creating six-year terms for some of these positions. The review process is different. It feels very subjective to me. So that, I think, can create some difficulties in terms of whether someone is asked to return for the second three years or not. I also am aware that some committees, where the appointing authority of the town manager is, it's either in our bylaws or the Town Manager Act, so there's conflicts there. There's two committees that I'm aware of, Council on Aging and whatever the Board of Youth Services is known as now, that have term limits built in. And so I think there's more that needs to be considered here. I know there's a balance, but I also know there's some other committees, and without mentioning names, there's some committees that, you know, we're very lucky to have people serving for a long time on those committees. And I think sometimes, after a while, after the work is done, if the work is appreciated, it's hard to go through a reapplication process as well. And not every committee is the same, I guess, especially for those that were looking for particular expertise. Zoning Board and Redevelopment Board come to mind for that. So I think it's good for discussion. I think we all need to think a little bit more about this, and maybe ask some questions, maybe get some more information as to, you know, all of the committees where we're the appointing authority of the town manager and the moderator. I know you've talked to him, and he may be perfectly on board on what he wants to do. But I think it needs to, I think we need to think about this a little bit more.
Mr. Diggins?
Do you want to say something?
No.
Okay. So I just also want to add that, I think it will encourage people, and we can encourage people to appreciate that you don't have to have an official seat on a committee or a commission to have a voice. You won't have an official vote, but you'll have a voice. And the town is really good about making sure that, you know, people in the room, virtual or whatever, have a voice at meetings. And that can increase the number of people, you know, interacting, you know, in committees. And I think it requires maybe a little bit of a culture adaptation to think more in those terms, so that if you really care about a committee and you step down to allow someone else to have an official role, you don't have to leave the room. You can be in the room. One example is, I have never been an official member of the Envision Arlington Standing Committee, but I attend all the meetings. And as we all know, your competence is really a function of your knowledge and your, I guess, communication skills, or whatever. But the whole point is that people will trust and respect you based on your knowledge and what you bring to the table. You don't have to have an official voice, you know, or official vote to do that. And I think this would go a long way to making more people appreciate that, and potentially bring in, you know, more people onto the committees and commissions. But I appreciate the desired weight and to think about this more. And as you noted, Mr. De Corsi, there is that point where you can't even review after the first term. But the kind of easy granting of a second term is just to be kind of, in a way, is let people know that we appreciate your willingness to step up the first time, if you want to continue, then it's easy for you to continue doing so. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't put the agenda on as a vote, because I didn't think we were there yet, as well as the conversations we've all had, but I had the town manager and town clerk, and I haven't had a chance to speak with the town moderator, and just briefly, Mr. Diggins. So...
Should I move receipt of Mr. Diggins's?
Move by receipt by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins?
Yeah, second, yeah.
Any further questions and comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. We now go to new business, Ms. Mahan.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
Very overworked, Attorney Cunningham?
No, no new business. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our town manager, Mr. Feeny?
No new business. Thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I haven't had an agenda item recently. I may have had some... Just briefly, I, we haven't had an agenda item recently, I may have had some older new business on this, but just a very brief update on Newgar, and we had sent a letter as a board back on June 9th to DEP, basically requesting, or pointing out some of the inconsistencies that the experts for the Arlington Land Trust had discovered during the course of the proceedings before the Conservation Commission, asking DEP to ask the proponent to perform more calculations and maybe do some more testing. There was a follow-up letter from the proponent's attorney criticizing the board for sending a letter and pointing out that their calculations were just fine, or inferring that, and I just want to point out, on July 31st, DEP actually sent out information requisitions asking the proponent to perform calculations because it appeared there was at least one error, which has a very significant potential error, which, again, big issue down there is the estimated high groundwater level, and there's a measurement between what's estimated in the bottom of a structure or any infiltration chamber, and what was submitted showed a four-foot separation. It appears that there was an error that brings that down to less than four feet. If it is less than four feet difference, additional testing has to be done, and I just want to point out that DEP sent this request for new calculations and for new drawings on July 31st, so it'll be two months this week, and the proponent, who was very critical of us, was very critical of the Conservation Commission, you would have thought if it was an easy calculation, they would have gotten it back in a, in a week because it complained so much about having to wait on this project. They haven't answered, and so, we'll keep an eye on it, and just, Mr. Morgan confirmed today with me that nothing has come back from them, but I'm very appreciative of the work that the Land Trust's experts did, because they pointed out things that they were criticized for, and lo and behold, it looks like they're right at least on a couple of these points. So, at some point, Madam Chair, I may ask for a full agenda item if we get more information, but I did want to give that update to you right now.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I guess more old business, I just want to really thank, you know, everyone who, you know, played a role, I mean, in pulling off any town day, especially the staff, you know, and especially the select board staff, I mean, and as we heard tonight, the drama goes on, you know, but in case, what was that?
I said, no good deed.
But, but, but in case you can't wait for more fun, you know, the date for next year's town day, you know, has been set for the third Saturday in September, September 19th, I mean, and, and I just want to add, especially since Mr. Morgan was here, I mean, I kind of gave a little hard time about the little spot nearest by pond, you know, and saying like, you know, it's like, just want to like Arlington fun again. Well, Arlington's fun, you know, it's plenty fun, you know, but I guess, we, kind of like the parent, you know, the kid comes with an A, and you're like, but no A plus, you know, and, and I think it's just that, you know, it's because, I toss around the word vision, I mean, I don't think of myself as a visionary, certainly not a prophet or anything like that, but when you get to know, I mean, a lot of the things that a group can do, or that a place can do, you see just so much potential there, you know, and, and that's just what I see in Arlington, it's just like so much potential, we're in like a really good spot in, in the area, I mean, and, and sometimes I'm like, let's just do a whole lot more, because we can, I mean, not every place can, you know, and I won't name other towns, I mean, but, but we can, and we do, and next year we'll do town day, and thanks to people like Katie and the staff, I mean, I'm sure it will in some ways be better, you know, so thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
Well, at some point, we're going to have to incorporate this dance party that you've been talking to about into the town day planning, so we'll see how we can get that done. I also just want to thank everyone, beautiful weather usually leads to a good town day, but it was certainly jam-packed, and thank the town staff for putting together, Public Safety for keeping us safe, and cleaning it up after, I came by shortly after the event, and everything was all cleared out, so, and, you know, I stopped in between games, so it took me about an hour of it, but I was back in the center before the fireworks, and it was certainly bustling, so I, you know, I think our, you know, all-day town day event that culminates with the fireworks is really working out and really promoting a lot of local business, so, you know, it really is an event geared for town residents, but, you know, more specifically to allow local businesses to, to highlight what they, what they do, and I think that is really, has been very successful in the past couple of years, so. Great day, can't wait for the next one.
Thank you. And my new business, sort of piggybacking on everything CSO, our colleagues in Cambridge, Cambridge City Council are meeting tonight at the exact same time for a follow-up from Councilor Patty Nolan, who oversees their health and environmental committee, and she was on, last Thursday was the meeting with MWRA Cambridge and Somerville regarding the Alway Brook Mystic River, as well as Charles River, and moving forward on the CSO issue. Some of it was designed, in my personal opinion, to put you to sleep, but then some wasn't. It, you know, it's sort of how you look at it, when, you know, the plans were presented and, you know, they said, which raised from Somerville and the Cambridge DPW director, that they wanted to know if there's no live bacteria from CSOs that are discharged into the Mystic River or the Charles River, which is true, but converse is, there is live bacteria, and there is a serious issue on the Alway, but it was a completely different meeting. It was the first meeting in about two, three years, they actually took the three water bodies and presented 37, whatever, plans, different plans, hybrid, et cetera, but, you know, but that was encouraging, although some of them, they kept saying and had an asterisk, all costs subject to change, and the change was like, in my personal opinion, if you're going to get serious about what you're going to do and what it actually does cost, because some of the costs were one to three billion, which is, I wouldn't waste any of my colleagues' time on that, but the thing I was really encouraged about is Cambridge is really, they're taking a vote tonight, that Councilor Nolan and her subcommittee, which is four of the seven or nine city councilors, to establish a policy order, that they are going to ask, Cambridge is going to ask their city staff to present a matrix of options, along with a cost-benefit analysis, on a way forward to eliminate CSOs, and the driving theme is complete elimination by 2050, and to design any future plans to a 25-year storm water control. And Councilor Nolan also said she's going to ask her staff to also try to put together, since they can throw out one to three billion, which really isn't a thing, she also feels sincerely that there's a cost to doing nothing, and she thinks the cost of doing nothing is going to far outweigh the cost of doing something, of the right thing. But then the other thing that was really encouraging and was reflected in the CSO meeting with MWRA, the first time everybody, usually, we know the MWRA is there, but you don't see names, faces, and they don't speak, they did this time. Cambridge will be putting together a commission working group to improve public participation as well as to improve meaningful public input, and to create a public body that will collaborate with the cities and towns, not just Somerville and Cambridge, moving forward on, around Alway Brook and the plans that go forward. So, I had gotten something from the counselor over the weekend, and I just sent a communication saying, of course, the board remains committed, as does the town manager and DPW director, and, you know, please let us know what comes of the vote tonight, and of course, if there's anything that's appropriate, that we can have our town manager, or whomever he deems fit, to be the point person for what gets established from the Cambridge City Council vote tonight. And then I also said, and of course, you know, your colleagues on the Arlington Select Board will certainly be earnest to participate in that process, but I think it's really important that we get the manager and the Health and Human Services and Department of Public Works sort of, if there is something outlined and that collaboration coalition is established, that they're in the lead on that. So, we move forward on Alway and CSOs, and I appreciate my colleagues who are now as well-versed, I think, on the wastewater issue and amount of live bacteria versus non-live bacteria. I apologize, not that you all didn't have that knowledge before, but unfortunately, you can probably put your head on the pillow and write it on the other side. So, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you.
I know a lot about you.